It'll just be a moment, it's prepping the livestream. Okay, we're ready, President Weidmeyer.
Thank you. Good evening, welcome to the Village of Trustees, Village of Pingree Grove, Monday, January 18th, Board Meeting. Can we, we're gonna call the meeting to order, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please, if we can have our flag graphic, please? Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag.
America.
The United.
The Republic.
For which it stands.
And.
Which is.
Nation.
One nation, under God.
God.
In the visible.
Invisible.
Liberty.
It does.
Roll. That is certainly one thing that sounds better in person. Doesn't, doesn't do well on Zoom. Shelley, can you call the roll, please?
Yes, Trustee Hall.
He's muted.
We come back.
Trustee Hall, yeah, we'll come back to him, Trustee. Trustee Pearson.
Here.
Trustee Kubiak.
Here.
Trustee Hirschbein.
Here.
Trustee Dolcoski.
Here.
Trustee Lemus.
Here.
Trustee Hall.
Here.
President Weidmeyer.
I am here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, it's good to see everybody here tonight, everybody's well, I hope.
Yeah.
Doing well. Okay, shall I understand we have a few public comments for the, for the meeting tonight, I think you're gonna, you've been volunteered to read those?
Yes. So, for this evening, we have five public comments that were received via email. Additionally, we have one resident who's requested to make a live comment, so we will be admitting him to the meeting if he appears at the end of these comments that I'm gonna read out loud. I don't see him in the.
Okay, we'll get to it, we'll get those up.
Yep, so the first one is from Judy Triano, and it reads, hello, my name is Judy Triano, and I currently reside in Carollan at Cambridge Lakes. I want to voice my concern over the D.R. Horton plans to build a new subdivision off of Ryan King Road in Pingree Grove. I am not opposed to the idea of the new subdivision. My concern is that the increase of over 700 new houses and over 2,000 new residents will stress our already fragile, underfunded, and understaffed community infrastructure and services. I urge the Pink Village of Pingree Grove Board not to encourage or approve this new development unless the builder will provide funding to increase our capacity to provide fire and police services, water and sewer treatment, road maintenance, education, school capacity, and any other community infrastructure needs. D.R. Horton is one of the largest developers in the country. Do not let them profit from our community without making them pay upfront to assure Pingree Grove has what it needs to appropriately support their residents. Thank you, Judy Triano. The second one is from Ken Kosiolik, and I apologize if I pronounce that wrong. Dear Village Board, as a resident of Carollan at Cambridge Lakes, I am very concerned about the D.R. Horton Development Plan north of Americana Avenue. Specifically, the roads that will be used for ingress and egress. As our community is in the completed status, we finally look forward to being a gated community and welcome the installation and 24-hour operation of entrance and exit gates. Any plans for using Andrew Boulevard for access to the new development will be met with high concern from our community. We will not tolerate an endless flow of construction traffic through our community on roads that we own and maintain. Please consider this in negotiations with D.R. Horton. Best regards, Ken Kosiolik. The next one is from another Carollan resident, she gave, her first name is Barbara. It says, I have read the agenda that Horton is going to present, and my question is, what does Pingree Grove get out of Horton building all these houses? He is building housing that has a lot of issues and is making millions at our expense. He should have to put back in the community infrastructure, example, schools, roads, green space, et cetera, fire department, water and sewer. This will put a drain on our resources unless he is required to upgrade those. I live in Carollan and see the inferior quality of workmanship firsthand. Pingree Grove is like Schaumburg was in the 60s. We moved there because of the open fields, farms, and a peaceful place to live. It has grown, but with, not without the contribution of the builders who gave us quality housing, schools, and green space. We love it out here, it is the small-town atmosphere and quiet lifestyle not often found. You need controlled housing from a quality builder. That was that one. Now, the next one is from John and Sandy Dittsworth, they live on Americana Avenue. Good evening, my one comment for tonight's meeting, I am not in favor of opening our completed gated private Carollan retirement community for access of construction vehicles and traffic, specifically Andrew and Americana Avenue. That would include no access through the west end of Americana Avenue terminus emergency exit. Thank you, John and Sandy Dittsworth. So, a very similar comment, it might even be identical, from Don and Paulette Neary, also on Americana Avenue. I am not in favor of opening our completed gated private Carollan community, so it does appear to be the same language, again, that would include no access through the west end of Americana Avenue. So, that was all five of the written comments that we received. I'm not sure there is someone in the waiting room that I don't recognize. So, Steve, would you like me to admit that person to determine if it's Mr. Rhodes who had registered?
Sure. Good evening, sir.
I think he's still connecting to audio.
Okay. Rhodes is his last name, correct?
Yes.
Maybe we can come back to him, oh, well, our next thing is a longer item here, oh, here he goes. Unmute yourself, sir. Unmute, unmute yourself, you're still muted.
Are you able to unmute?
Yes, here we go, good evening, how's everybody?
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Okay, welcome to our meeting.
Okay, can I ask you a couple of my questions that I have?
Yep, we understand you wanted to make a public comment, you requested to do that live, so you.
Yes.
The floor is yours, so.
Okay, I appreciate the time to talk to you guys. At the July meeting, I went to it, and some gentlemen from D.H. Horton were there, and they were talking about the new development and that going in up there, and I live right on, in Carollan, and I'm right behind where the homes are gonna go, but the question that I had asked them, where Americana and Andrew dead-end up there, there's three empty lots, there's stake to be built on, and I'd asked them, why aren't they building and that, and his comment was, is that they're leaving their options open. And I asked him again in front of everybody, you know, what do you mean by your options, and he said, just what I said, we're leaving our options open. So, I don't understand why, to the original plan, it shows three houses going there, there's stake, and there's nothing, so that's one of the questions. And we're right below where the other new homes will be dropping down, it'll be the open area and that, and the section that they're talking about coming down to. My next question that I also had is that, with the fields, with all the fields that were going in up there, and those are all gonna be schools and that, I mean, I know that you guys had said that we need money in Pingree Grove to help pay our bills. Do these soccer fields and that, are they gonna be paying any type of revenue to the village? And my last question that I would ask on everything is that I'm sure that with all this planning that went down, you must have talked to the township, the county, at the state about, we basically only have two-lane highways all the way around this whole monstrous development, and how soon would that possibly start to be enlarged? And I don't expect you guys to answer me tonight, but I would like some type of an answer within a few weeks, or meet with somebody to talk about this again.
Sure, we can arrange for that.
Okay, I appreciate that, you have a good time, and I hope to see you guys soon.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you very much.
All right. Okay, so that's all the public comments, Shelley?
Yes, that's everything.
Okay, thank you for reading those. So, we'll move on to item five, there's special presentation items, our first item is the D.R. Horton Plan. Jeff, do you wanna give a little brief introduction and kind of fill everybody in with what you've done up to this point, please?
Absolutely, thank you, President Weidmeyer. I know we have a lot of interested residents that are probably watching out there on YouTube tonight, and I know the board is very interested in this as well. What I've thought I'd talk about tonight is the development process and give some explanation in terms of where we are and where we need to go during the review of this project. And so, this evening, we have several plans that look pretty detailed, they're colored, they're, they're well-drawn, artist renderings. They're, they're probably supported by some degree of engineering effort because the developer isn't going to show you something that isn't possible to build, or at least they think is possible to build. But they're really just that, they're concept plans. At the concept plan level, you typically expect some type of revision. The one that's before the board tonight for presentation is a bit more detailed than what they've shown in the past, they used to have some bubble plans that showed this area as residential uses, generally connected to some of the larger streets with, you know, collector-type roads that would, would drive out to something like Big Timber or 47. This particular plan that's presented right now, it does fall a little bit short in that it departs from that concept of reaching any of those roads, it may be just one piece of the puzzle. And I think D.R. Horton is going to speak to that somewhat during their presentation. And so, this is a natural part of the process where there's discussion about concepts of how it gets to a viable plan that's both, you know, acceptable to the community, but also financially feasible to the developer, because without those two things, development doesn't happen. And so, the goal this evening is to, to discuss, you know, some of the merits and shortcomings of the plan, and, and see if there's any consensus on the approach of, of going forward, how, how does that move forward? From there, you may see some revisions to the plan, you may see, you know, different things take place. But eventually, it needs to get to a place where they file a formal application, which they have not done to date. That application kicks off a start where you may go to a Planning and Zoning Commission, where you may have one or more meetings, ultimately having a public hearing on the issue. And that may be a plan that looks similar to tonight, or it may look totally different, depending on how things go from this point. As that approaches recommendation, there's also an annexation agreement that will start talking about all the critical terms that some of our people in the public have already commented on, about school impact, about roads, about when is the infrastructure happening? All those details get put into the annexation agreement, and that becomes the subject of a public hearing before the Village Board. So, that will all be out in the public as well. And eventually, all of that comes together for board action somewhere down the road, it's, it's likely a fair amount of timeout, it's not like this will happen at the next meeting or two. There's, there's a fair amount of time and effort that needs to go into this type of activity. So, with that, I think I'd like to add in the D.R. Horton representatives here to join our meeting. Maybe we can get them to join, Shelley?
Yep.
And while they're there, I'll say a few words about the project as well. You all have seen the board packet, and some of the people in the, in the public may have downloaded it and read the memo. I won't read that verbatim by any stretch, but, you know, the village does find itself in a kind of a unique situation at this time where we've been a very fast-paced growing village. We've discussed and touched on the, the financial aspects of, of operating the municipality. And we're, we're in the middle of a utility expansion right now with the drilling of the second well and water treatment plant. And we're slated for the wastewater treatment plant expansion. Continued development will help to keep those costs under wraps. But if we pull back on that, we either have to look at potentially delaying some of those improvements, or it may end up costing more to existing customers, so there's a reality to that. And some of those water treatment plant options, we really need no matter what. Commercial development is another thing that's of great interest, certainly to the community, and rooftops are a huge issue in that equation. It is a bit of a, you know, which came first type of issue, but when it comes to retailers, when you have competitive concentrations of commercial activity like up on 47, or over on Randall Road, retailers kind of have a herd mentality, and they're gonna go where the rest of them are. And until there's a convincing argument that there's enough people in one place that it kind of creates its own market, so we have some of that, but the larger, larger-type retail, you know, does require some, some rooftops, so there's, there's something about that. Additionally, when it comes to village services, we talked, we touched on that, you know, clearly the budget is a critical point. And at some point, you have the opportunity to reach a critical mass of, of community building, where the actual marginal cost of servicing another home is not the same as your initial cost. Right now, you have facilities, you have equipment, you have employees. There's a certain base level cost that's built in to operating that, and whether they service some additional areas or not, isn't always a one-to-one ratio, and, and I wouldn't ever suggest that you try to boil that down to an equation, but there is value in numbers when you can get to a critical mass that can support, you know, that type of activity. So, the plan itself is looking at, they're proposing 751 housing units. There's a mix, 35% of those are single-family and 65% are townhome. I'm gonna split it up a little bit here, and maybe I'll put up the plan on the screen just to share with the audience what I'm talking about. There's the plan, so over here on the east side or the right side of the screen, that's 356 age-targeted units, 53% of them being on the south side adjoining the Carollan neighborhood, and 47% of them being located north. When we switch over to the west side here, there's 395 units proposed there, most of them, 81% of them, located in the rear-loaded townhome area, and additional 19% of them being single-family. We've discussed several different things, access being one of them. The access point feeding that is singular at this time. As I mentioned earlier, I think D.R. Horton is going to speak to that access a little bit about some of the challenges that are faced. The basic community layout does follow the traditional design standard of Pingree Grove, at least it appears that way on the plans as they're drawn today. They've also shown several open-space concepts and designs that could be developed with the project to, to create its own character and give the community something extra. And additionally, this project would be serviced by its own independent HOA. And what I mean by that is it would operate independently of the existing HOAs, so D.R. Horton has indicated that it's their intention to set it up that way, and they would not then have access to being members of or accessing those community amenities that already exist to service parts of Pingree Grove. So, with that, I'll just turn it over to D.R. Horton, I can put those plans back up on the screen, and you can talk a little bit more about the specifics of the plan.
Chris, you're still muted, there you go.
Technology, I'll figure it out one of these days, thank you guys, appreciate it, you know, if we could put the plan up to kind of talk about it. Happy to be here once again in front of everybody, been working with the village and staff for a number of years. We're very excited to be continuing to work with the village. We touched on it, you know, I've touched on it in the October meeting, touched on multiple meetings before, we take a great deal of pride and accomplishment and everything that we've been able to do together as a group. And tonight, and what we're at the point now is we're talking about our future, right, where, where do we go from here? What would be the next step, and, you know, taking a step back, and I outlined this in my July letter, but I think it's important for the context, you know, this land was all part of the original Cambridge Lakes development as originally contemplated way back in 2004. This specific property itself was actually annexed to the village as part of the Cambridge Lakes development in 2007. As many of us are all aware, 2007, 2008 is when the market turned. This property was then de-annexed in 2010, but it was specifically identified as a future development property, as a land that both Horton and the village identified as something that we would like to come back to when times were better. I'm very happy to be here saying that times are better, and we would like to try to continue to expand to go back to the original concept of what we had laid out for Cambridge Lakes as a whole. More, one, Jeff touched on this, but in order to continue to grow as a village, the village needs additional rooftops to attract and sustain commercial development, and we can certainly provide that. In order, however, in order to support this residential development, there's a certain amount of critical mass essentially that's necessary in order to support and need this, so. As Jeff touched on, this layout is 751 total homes, it's about a 50-50 split between traditional and age-targeted neighborhood. It's based on the same guiding principles as the rest of everything else that we've built out there in Pingree Grove. We've got the community centered around a big central park, the home, the neighborhoods are all interconnected with bike trails and walking paths. The parks and amenities that we've laid out here are additive, they're not parks that are currently within the village, they're all something new. And the mix that we've got on this plan right now is based on what current market demand is looking for, what we feel that our buyers and what we're seeing, because we feel that we're in touch with what current market demand is and what buyers are coming in and looking for in our current sales operations and Pingree Grove. So, looking at, again, taking a step back a little bit and looking at overall, the entire plan for what's known as the Cambridge Lakes development, or essentially what we've built out in Pingree Grove, we're currently over 4,100 total homes that is contemplated, laid out as the plans as they sit right now. So, this proposal right now for 751 homes would be an additional, almost an additional 20% to the existing development itself. Looking, you know, we've talked a little bit about the single-family townhome split, and there've been some questions on this one because there's a little, there's more townhomes on this section than there would be people had felt in some other ones, if you're looking at just this piece overall, it is a 65-35 split, as Jeff alluded to. If you look at Cambridge Lakes as a whole, on the south side, it's a 55-45 split. On the north side, it is a 76% single-family, 24% townhome split. The original plan for Cambridge Lakes as a whole called out a 50-50 split between single-family and duplex and townhomes, as far as 50%, at least 50% had to be single-family and duplex. The other 50% could be townhomes or other multifamily type of products. So, we're still, even adding this to it, adding this section of single fam, adding C&amp;L Farms to the overall, the ratio is still 57% single-family duplex and 43% towns. One issue, I was in the other room prior to, and we heard this in the public comment, we had touched on this earlier, right, the road access, how we get to this community. One of the things that was brought up at our earlier meeting, and certainly was brought up in the public comments prior to this one, is the question about Andrew Boulevard and its connection to this north. This plan does not show a connection through Andrew Boulevard, and there is not an intention to connect Andrew Boulevard to this neighborhood. The Carollan development is going to be separate and standalone, we had preserved those two lots at staff request early on in the development of Cambridge Lakes North that in the future, as we said, we identified this in 2010 as a property we would want to come back to. And it was, at that time, staff included, asked, you know, let's preserve what our options would be in the future. There are two lots there at the end of Andrew Boulevard, the intersection essentially of Andrew and Americana. Those lots are currently for sale right now and available to be purchased, so there won't be any question on whether there's a road that's gonna connect there or go through there at all in the future. One other question that had come up at our previous meeting in October was the question of where, you know, how do we get there via Ryan King Road, and what happens? You know, what happens once you get past the western edge of this? And we actually have some ideas that we wanted to talk through and present tonight, and I think Bruce from my team is with us, and he's gonna talk through that a little bit, Bruce, are you here?
I'm here, let me get my video up and running. Good evening, everybody, for those of you that don't know me, I'm Bruce Mellon, I'm the Land Development Manager for D.R. Horton. Jeff, if you could, I don't know if there's a, there you go, that image right there. So, we heard the questions at the last meeting and, you know, separately in some written comments about providing a secondary access point as part of the development, we're gonna be improving Ryan King Road from the Andrew-Daniel intersection up through the western boundary of the site, including a bridge over Tyler Creek and bike path improvements along the, along the road. So, the question of a secondary access point was some, was a topic that we heard from several of the trustees as well as, you know, from the public. And, you know, the obvious one is Ryan King Road and just extending that all the way out to Route 47, the road is there in physical characteristics at least. And so, that seems like the most obvious, but alternatively, there is the potential to access Big Timber Road, we do a small portion of this parcel that does a butt Big Timber Road and gives us the opportunity to explore that further, Jeff, if you could move to the next slide. So, while Ryan King Road may seem like the, the obvious choice for extension, I put this slide together to kind of highlight the pros and cons of Ryan King Road and building it now. We'd have to follow the existing alignment because that's the only property that's available to us. And unfortunately, that puts Ryan King Road in the middle of a curve on Route 47. The site distances are substandard to IDOT's current design criteria. So, there's, there's a lot of, there would be a lot of difficulty in making, simply there's, there's a lot of, there would be a lot of difficulty in making, simply just extending ranking road out on the existing alignment. Ultimately, for the full build for Pingery Grove, you know, when Goldberg develops and the folks on the other side of Route 47 develop and, you know, IDOT, between the village and IDOT and whatever development comes, it's in all likelihood, ranking road will be realigned in some way, shape or form somewhere in the vicinity of the light purple arrow that I'm showing here. That's where IDOT is going to ask for that access point with a signal and turn lanes and good site distance and, and all of the good designing and planning ideas that come with road improvements. So. The biggest problem for us today is that we don't control, neither us nor the village controls the land from our western property out to Route 47s. So any improvements on ranking road would have to have multiple parties involved and not necessarily parties that are motivated to proceed in a reasonable, reasonable fashion. Alternatively, if you want to jump to the next slide, there is a possibility of getting access out to Big Timber Road. To this point, we haven't really considered that, given kind of the conceptual nature of the project. And given that this also has a lot of engineering obstacles to overcome, it's going to be a significantly large bridge to cross the floodplain and wetlands that are associated with Eakin Creek. It also falls in a curve on Big Timber Road, so permitting that may be a difficulty. All of these things that we would be more than happy to explore as we tried to move this project forward. We understand that a secondary access point is a concern and a critical desire of the trustees and the, and the village and staff. And we certainly understand that, you know, we will investigate all options with staff and the good folks at Fairgram to try to come up with the best plan. But, you know, at this point, Big Timber Road access is probably the more doable of the two access points, but we'll certainly investigate all options in order to try to come up with a, with a solution that, you know, meets your needs. That's all I had to say about the access, Chris.
Thanks, Bruce. And it's, it's basically what I have to start the presentation tonight. Not quite sure how you want to proceed from here. I'll defer to you, to Jeff, to Phil's president, not quite sure how you want to proceed from here.
Sure. From here, I think we can open it up for discussion amongst the trustees. I could put the plan back up if you'd like. Just, just ask me and I'll add the plan back up there if you'd like to have the visual aid.
Okay, is, this is our opportunity now to, to bombard these guys with more questions and comments. You all have seen this plan before. This isn't anything new. Nothing has changed. Again, we're still on a kind of, they're still kind of on a fact finding mission here as to, you know, again, what will help move this along. So. Trish, I'm sure you're dying to start us off.
I'm ready to go.
All right. I figured you would.
And actually, so as not to waste people's time and mumble with my words, I did write down many of my comments. So before even discussing the proposed plan, I have some comments that I'd like to share. So DR Horton approached the board in July and October and both times I spoke about unresolved issues between the recently turned over Carolan HOA and DR Horton. Specifically, Carolan's transition audit, which looked at operating expenses and reserve balances prepared by professionals in the field, found that there were deficiencies of over $100,000. In response, DR Horton's legal team offered the HOA $15,000 with the stipulation that they must also sign an affidavit waiving their rights to any further claims against DR Horton. Regardless of future deficiencies found, the HOA did not sign the waiver and has since found more deficiencies. To be fair legally, an HOA has 10 years to bring forward unresolved issues from a turnover. But the issues that Carolan's HOA have presented to DR Horton have either been ignored completely, no response at all, or returned with that offer a 15% in waiver of future requests. So my point in bringing this to the attention of the board once again, is that I believe that this developer needs to make good on all of its legal, financial and ethical responsibilities to all of the HOAs in Pingery Grove before this board considers future agreements with DR Horton. I'm not saying that I'm not willing to look at the plan of burnage, but I would like to see these unresolved issues resolved first. So that was my first comment. And I can go on if anybody else has other things. And I'll keep going if you want.
Go ahead.
Okay. Jeff had spoken about the commercial aspect in, in pre-planning. So at the very beginning, before we talked about it, you talked about the importance of the commercial in Pingery Grove. So in that background narrative on page six of the agenda, I read about the importance of meaningful commercial development reaching a critical point to the village. If the village has any leverage at all in this deal, I will ask DR Horton immediately put up for sale the parcel at the southwest corner of Daniel and Rinking Road, just north of the fire station. Please stop holding on to it until the land value increases. You have enough money. And Pingery Grove could use a CVS, Walgreens or a grocery store. That corner is ideal for either of those. Additionally, I would like there to be a discussion about recapture fees as they relate, as they relate to the proposed development in 2000, the 2004 annexation agreement is very prohibitive in this area with regard to future development and the village has been adversely affected as a result. Keep going. I mean, if anybody else says more.
You're doing a good job. Keep going.
Going. I'm going to keep going if you're going to let me speak. Okay, let's talk again about the connectivity with Carolan. And I'm really concerned with the comments from Chris Lester and Bruce Mellon because now my, my comments were regarding the two options that seems to be an issue and that is Big Timber and Ranking Road. You know, if, if, if the existing alignment on Ranking Road is not going to be approved, that messes up the, the ranking road entrance. So I'm even more concerned. Page nine of the agenda speaks to emergency access and the possibility of roadway connection to Carolan. I realize that this is duplicating what some of the residents had mentioned as well. Please respect the position of Carolan's HOA. It is opposed to any road connectivity to a new development. The small section of land at the terminus at Americana Court was deeded to the HOA with assurances that it is 100% in their control to prohibit access at that location. Now it seems obvious that Horton is considering yet another Carolan burnage connection where Andrew Boulevard dead ends at Americana. And I know, Bruce, you mentioned that that's not the case, but it just, there's a road right there. When you look at the plan, there's a road right there. So if you didn't consider it to be a connection, why is there a road right there? I brought up this at the meeting in October as well. Why are the two lots at the intersection not available for sale? And if, Chris, you said that they are not, as of a maybe six weeks ago, the sales office says that they're not available. So you might want to speak with them. If those two lots are available, they need to be available. Carolan residents were sold homes in a private community. Originally, it was advertised and sold as a gated community. That's a little bit of smoke and mirrors. DR Horton, please release those lots and keep Carolan's streets private. Writing down lots of notes here. Again, so now I'm really concerned about the issue with Big Timber. On the map, I, it, it appeared to me that Big Timber was an access point, but are you saying that that whole park and all with, you know, the high school lots and everything that that was all not meant to be entered into from Big Timber? Is that correct? Okay, I don't know. I'm going to keep going. On page eight of the agenda, the developer states zoning is proposed to conform to terms of the original annexation agreement as outlined in Exhibit D. I would ask that nothing in this proposed plan conformed to the original agreement. And I have two reasons. Number one, the monotony clause needs to be more specific. It says that elevations, exterior colors and models must not be repeated less than every three homes. However, many streets, when looking from one end down to the other, are so close in color, might not be exactly the same color, but they're close. They're so close in color and elevation that they resemble military barracks. Homes are too close together. The streets are too narrow to the point of being difficult for emergency equipment to get through. We see this in the townhomes too. Not enough parking, especially near the townhomes. So again, please don't use the parameters from Schedule D that was written in April of 2004 as the standard for the current proposal. And then number two, as has been explained to me several times, the original annexation agreement heavily leaned in favor of the developer and to the disadvantage of the village and its residents. In 2004, the village with all of its 124 residents was not in a position to hire lawyers with expertise in planned developments. And it was likely that the village could very well have been annexed into Elgin had they not signed with Horton. But that leads me to believe that the village was taken advantage of by this developer. We're smarter now. So let's see a new and improved annexation agreement that is fair for both parties. Okay, I'm just going to keep going then. This is regarding the amenities. So several times it's been brought to the board's attention that the size of the amenities in Cambridge Lakes and Carolan are not sufficient. For example, the pool and the gym at Cambridge Lakes Community Center are often at capacity and the parking is inadequate. Carolan's clubhouse is already too small and the development isn't even built out yet. Its fitness center is quite small, which is ironic being that it is marketed as an active adult community. The proposed plan looks lovely with all the parks and outdoor amenities, but I worry that this may be another example of smoke and mirrors. I see that Burnage will not have a clubhouse, pool, et cetera. And its residents will not be able to use the facilities in other neighborhoods. Who will have access to these parks? I'm good.
Okay, I have a quick question. It was already mentioned, but I think we need to make sure that the schools, they're going to be impacted quite severely by this development. So we need to make sure that it's adequately addressed in the new agreement.
They, the, just for the record, and I think this has been said prior, but they, they are in possession of our current impact fee schedule that we use with Pioneer Landing, which does take into account school impact fees. I think Karen, Director Plazek can speak to that also.
We think that's adequate then?
It's, it's a starting point, absolutely.
Okay.
All right. I have a few questions or comments, I guess. Tricia had spoken to the issues with the HOA at Carolan that are ongoing. I do agree that needs to be shored up before we even move forward with any new development. I also think that it's fair to state the HOA from Cambridge Lakes has not been turned over and we're still waiting on the election to happen. Until that does, I have a hard time moving forward. I want to make sure that we're moving forward in good faith. My second comment goes to commercial development. We talk about commercial development and how important it is for our village. We talk about how additional homes will help to bring in commercial development. I think it's difficult to do that when parcels of land that are owned by DR Horton are being held hostage, as Tricia said. I do agree. Not only is the land at Rinkin and 72 in a bad position, I think that the land in front of the new townhomes and Sunset Cove on the corner of Route 20 and Route 47 is sitting, I drive by there every day and if you ask me if it was for sale, I wouldn't know. The sign is the sign of a, or the size is, the size of the sign is the sign of a garage sale sign. Further, I've heard that that land is being offered at over $2 million while the parcel across, directly across the street is at $400,000. So I have a hard time understanding, I'm not a land expert, but I have a hard time understanding how any business can come in and have any type of ROI on a parcel of land that's $2.4 million. My next concern again, and I just want to say it, I know you've touched on it, but I, there's no way I can ever vote yes on this plan unless we have a second access road. There is no way that this will work. We cannot dump an additional 750 homes out onto ranking road and expect for that to not become a traffic issue. That's all I have.
Especially if the issue of ranking road is at risk, if it's, if, if it's not going to be approved, I think that's the second place to move on from or to, to resolve. But I, I did think, I did think according to the plan, it looked to me that, that park, East Park, was going to have access to Big Timber. So my suggestion would have been, take those townhomes down in the west side, move them by, by the park and put the parks down so it would kind of alleviate some of that congestion. And if, you know, great, I was very pleased to see that it budded up to Big Timber. But I guess one of my questions is why wouldn't we be able to get out on Big Timber? Does anybody have an answer for that?
Bruce, do you want to speak to that real quick?
I think that's an issue that we're going to certainly explore during preliminary engineering and investigation, you know, right now there are issues with it, so we don't want to promise it's part of this plan. And if we were to proceed forward at the board's, if the board expressed an interest in moving this project forward, we would certainly, we've heard out and clear that we need to find a second access point. So we will find a second access point. It's just not shown on the plan right now. And, you know, with this, the uncertainty of, you know, the viability of this project right now, where we haven't put the resources into it to fully vet all of the details and work on engineering plans and work on survey and do all the things that are necessary to come up with a, a, a real plan for that access point.
Can I ask also, Bruce, about those, those, a lot of high school soccer fields and lacrosse fields have, I'm, I'm assuming that this is just Hampshire High School. I don't know. And like somebody said, are, is there going to be fees that these people are paying? And have the high schools been notified that you're planning to build or that you're hoping to build or proposing to build high school soccer and lacrosse fields? Have the high schools been involved in any, any of these discussions?
I think the labeling on that might be slightly misleading. Their high school sized soccer fields, their high school sized lacrosse fields, they're not meant for the high school ownership. Their, that park along Big Timber Road was intended to be built and turned over to the village for its, you said its discretion.
So that would be part of the HOA of Burnage. Is that correct?
I believe it would be owned by the village, maintained by the HOA. I could be wrong on that. Chris could be better suited to speak to that.
It would be the same as the way the baseball fields are currently handled by the village. It's, it's an amenity for the village itself. However, the village saw see fit, whether they were having tournaments there, whether they're leasing it to a youth program, a competitive team, a travel program, whatever it would be. Again, these are amenities that are, you know, speaking to points earlier that we've been building since 2004 as far as creating a village park district, right? There, there, there is no park district. There, there, there is no park district for Pingery Grove. There are the amenities and the parks that we've built as part of this development, so.
So those parks, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, please.
So those parks wouldn't be cost prohibitive to the HOA of Burnage?
No, they would not. No, not at all. And I, I wanted to address one thing to kind of put it in a historical standpoint, because Bruce, you know, is at a disadvantage of it right now. Because as he said, we haven't had a chance to look at it fully. We haven't had a chance to really investigate it. For a, from a historical standpoint, when we did the 10th amendment, the last time we were before you guys, we had in there that we were going to do a full access with a signal at RJB. At the time, the 10th amendment was reviewed and approved, we did not have confirmation. It was a, the village and Horton were going to work together with IDOT to get that intersection in and improve. And we, you know, we did it, right? It took a lot longer than any of us ever thought it was going to, but ultimately, something that at the onset of the 10th amendment, or even when the ninth amendment was done, couldn't have been done. We figured out a way to do it together. So that's, to your question, as far as Big Timber and some of these road access questions here, we understand the concern and understand that we need to find those answers. But at the same time, as Jeff alluded to earlier, as we've talked through, we need to, we're trying to look to find guidance on this to see whether there's a finish line that we're all working towards together, right? This is, we're looking to expand the village to complete and finish out and expand on the Cambridge Lakes development. And we're looking for the path forward in order to do that. So I, and as you guys are taking, as you guys are comments, what I'm doing is I'm taking notes throughout all of it. I don't know whether you want me to address comments after each trustee talks. If you want me to wait to the end and try to come back and circle back to a lot of them, what's the best way to handle this right now? I'm, I'm certainly flexible and do whatever we want to do.
I would suggest that let's get through the comments, because I think a lot of people may have some overlapping areas. And then, then if you're keeping good notes there, Chris, maybe then respond at the end and we can answer everybody's all at once.
I can testify to how good they are, but I'll take the best notes I can and forgive me if I skip some and I'll be happy to circle back.
And if I might also just add, you know, to trustee Tokowski's point there on the usage and how the operation of those parks may or may not manifest itself. You know, at this stage in the game, I think those are all on the table. That's typically something that you'd address through an annexation agreement. It might be part of the covenants and restrictions on the property. It could be part of the HOA documents. I think if it's an issue that we need to work through, that's, that's a level of detail that we would get to. And I can't speak to the historical context. Obviously, there's the baseball fields and, you know, maybe there's already a program that this village would follow. But I think those are all things that are on the table for discussion, if, if, you know, correctly, if I'm wrong, anybody.
No, Jeff, I think, I think you're absolutely right. When the last development was brought before us, I think Chris reminded me, it had a baseball field and a soccer field. And we asked you to change that back to two baseball fields, just based on the demand of our Little League and the, the demand for other people wanting to use those fields. So we felt we'd be better suited with two additional baseball fields. I think this development said, let's, let's bring a whole nother potential, you know, use to the village. You know, we have, we have Little League fields in, in three different locations now. This just added another element. And, and again, it's, I think the labeling of the high school soccer field, I think that just means, the way I take that is it's regulation sized soccer fields for that, for that level of, of playing. And, and I think their intention was for the same thing, that we would get soccer leagues that, you know, travel soccer leagues that wanted to use our fields. Again, attracting people from outside of Pingery Grove, you know, to use these, to use these amenities. And ultimately, that would potentially pay for the, pay for the upkeep of them. But it was just to bring another, another, you know, element to our, to our park, our parks program that we don't originally have. So I think that was kind of your intent on this, was it not, Chris?
That's correct. We've, you know, we've talked about it and we've been able to, you know, I know that the village, you have talked to me about it. I have had trustees mention it to me and I certainly have had residents talk to me about how, you know, they take a, you know, they take a level of pride in the fact that it's sort of, it's a, from a baseball standpoint, it's a, it's a regional hub for Little League in the Northwest suburbs. A lot of people have come to Pingery Grove for a baseball tournament at some point in time. So this was just another way, and again, these are concepts that we come up with, right? For, for us, it's a, you know, we, we hire, we hire professionals, we have consultants, we come up with ideas. We listen to what our customers, we listen to, you know, what our potential customers are saying that they like to see or they like to, would like to see. And, you know, we offer that. But ultimately, all of this process, right, through the original annexation agreement, through all of our amendments, throughout our entire, you know, 15 plus years of working together, it has always been a collaborative process between the builder and the developer as far as how this village evolves and progresses. So if that was, that was our concept, that was what we came up with. If it's something else that you guys want to see instead, we're all ears, right? Let's, let's work together and figure that out. And that's the, that's the reason why I'm here tonight. And my reason why all of us are here is I, I would like to continue to grow in the village and we're looking for the way to do that.
Is there any more comments from the trustees? I mean, I know we've heard a lot, we, we haven't heard anything from a couple of you guys. Do you want to jump in on any of this other, any of the comments to be made or before Chris starts going through some of his notes?
Can I go again?
Amber, we'd love to have you go again.
Okay. Chris, my question to you is, you know, I know that a lot of us have spoken and one of the concerns, one of the concerns I hear from residents is the, the density of this development. What is it that you're seeing and is there a possibility for us to have more single family homes there? Sean, can I ask you what your thoughts are on the density, on the density that's proposed in these homes?
Amber. The density per square acre there, we would have to look at a little bit further before I'd be able to give an opinion. I have not done my research in reference to that. I do want to do some comparables from the Schaumburg area in reference to crime patterns in relationship to that. But I did not as of today.
Well, what about just even comparing it to other areas that already exist in Cambridge Lake South? I mean, Schaumburg seems a little excessive, but, I mean, I'm, I'm sure that we get more calls from townhome develop, the townhome areas than we do from single family areas. Is that, that be a safe bet, chief, or?
That's a definite given, yes.
Well, I think that goes without saying. And I know Pat's going to pipe in and say, you know, we have other issues with snow plowing and trying to coordinate snowplow efforts with, you know, the HOA contractors. And I think we've resolved a few of those. Pat, do you have anything to add to that or? Unmute Pat. That little button on top with the microphone, there you go.
Yep, sorry about that.
No worries.
So far, the HOA, the vendors the HOA has been working with, we've been able to work out all those details. It just took a little bit from when we started. I'd like to add one thing about Americana that maybe everybody doesn't remember. We left to loop the water system and sewer system, two stub outs there. So there's a space between the two homes that looks like a road, but it really isn't. And one of the things we were clear early on in our meetings with Cambridge was no interconnection to the existing HOA, no traffic impacting the existing HOAs. But that is to get the utilities looped or, or fed, you know, through that system. So that area has to be open because you can't put a water main under someone's house. The other thing that you probably want to think about, and Sean might be able to comment more on this, but it could also double as an emergency exit with no road. If, God forbid, we ever have a natural disaster go through here and close down the main entrance to the Carolin and we can't get access off of Ranking Road, it just gives you another way to get emergency equipment and vehicles into the Carolin if some sort of large scale rescue ever had to be done. You don't need a road there or anything like that, but just having that open space to, you know, for an emergency vehicle to get through might be of help. But ultimately, you know, you guys get to decide what goes there or doesn't go there.
Well, except I believe that Chris mentioned earlier in the presentation that those two lots are in fact for sale. So those will not be available if that is the case.
That is the case on Daniel and Americana, but where I believe Americana Court goes all the way into the back.
That piece that was deeded.
Yeah, someone else commented, I thought on that, there's, there's a space between the houses, you know, a green space per se.
Yeah.
And that's to get the utilities through, but it could also double in a worst case scenario as another way to access the community.
Yeah, if I, I'm sorry to interject, but if I could clarify the, the two units for sale on Americana, there is to the east of there, right at the terminus of Andrew, about a 30 foot wide empty lot. It is for storm sewer, there's a 48 inch storm sewer pipe that runs through there, there's a 16 inch sanitary that runs through there. And I think the intent would be for a water main to run through there as well. It's not wide enough for a road on its own, which was why, you know, we had worked with the village to leave those two lots out, you know, for this conversation in the event that there was a desire or a need or, or any of that for a road. But now that that's been determined, those lots are for sale. And so there's still a 30 foot green space at the end of Andrew and at the intersection of Andrew and Americana. And then to your point, in neighborhood 813 at Americana Court in the far northeast section. Pat hit the nail right on the head. That outlot shown on our plans is not wide enough for a true roadway access. It's been sized for the potential for, but definitely need water main going through there, probably need storm sewer, maybe need sanitary, that hasn't been determined yet. And then, you know, depending on, you know, the, the chief's opinion on emergency access, there would be a potential for, you know, like a grass access road. They make the, the, the grass areas that you can put pavers underneath. You know, there's all kinds of options we have available to us. We're just keeping that option available. If the determination is that we don't want an emergency access, we'll certainly adjust the land plan accordingly.
But just to confirm that piece on Americana Court that was deeded to the HOA, and I believe that you told them when, and the HOA board, members of the HOA board were there in July, that in deeding that piece of the court to the HOA, that they have 100% control, that you can't do anything without their permission and approval. Is that correct?
I'd have to take a look at the deed and the subdivision to, I don't want to misspeak and mislead you in any way, shape or form. My memory, and I don't have it in front of me, is that when we did the Platte Reed Division, that there was a, a, a public access easement included on that outlot, which would give the village the ability to, to have ingress and egress for emergency vehicles only.
We'll need to.
We can certainly figure, yeah, we can certainly look at, into that and figure that out.
Yeah, we need to remind ourselves the accuracy of that.
From residents, there's also the question about, on the village side, how much of a quality oversight are we providing in terms of home, home construction review? Like, do we have a home inspector that is available and prepared to do this type of oversight?
What's the status of our Mr. Kelly? I know he's scheduled to retire, but there is no fixed date, is that correct?
I can speak to that. I've reviewed Mr. Kelly's contract and it does run through the end of the year, or I mean, at the end of the fiscal year. And I've talked to him recently where he's indicated that he expects to conclude that. So we'll have different opportunities there, either by extension of the contract or going out to seek new inspectors, be that by contract or in-house, but it's certainly something that we would intend to conduct rigorous inspections as, as I would expect you already do.
Thank you. And I want to mention also that while this project has shortcomings, I'm still definitely open to continuing to work with Dr. Horton to see further revisions of their plans.
Okay, anybody else want to chime in?
Yeah, I'll just make a quick comment. So it's, you know, a lot of trustees brought up some valid points and I think this gives the staff at Dr. Horton, you know, an opportunity to investigate and come up with some answers. And I think the key with this is all of us together, I really, I don't think I heard the, the word used, but we need to look at this as a, moving forward as a partnership. And I think that, that, that is a key part of this. So by working together and open communication and, and see where this can help grow the, the, the community.
You know, from, from day one, that we've always treated it like that, Joe, and I, you know, I, I, I'm glad that you kind of said that, but we've always treated this as a, as a business partner of ours and, and we haven't always agreed and we've, and, and they haven't always been happy with us. But we've always, like, like Chris mentioned, we've always tried to work together to find the best solution for the village. And, and I'm quite confident that if there's things that we, we want to see different or we, we would like additions to or instead of, I, I think that's just a discussion that we all can have. And I think that's, that's what they want to hear from us is, you know, what, what they can do. Again, like he said, this is their concept plan. This is what they do, they, they take down two, 100 acres or 300 acres or the last time, 1,000 acres. And they, and they, they conceptually plan the whole area. So, you know, none of us else in this room would do that kind of thing for a living. So, but we can certainly say we don't like this portion or we don't like that portion of it, or, or this is what we do like, or we'd like to see different. So, and I think they've always been receptive to that and, and I think they will continue to be that way, would be my opinion. And, and like Joe said, it's, it's, it's a partnership for the, the continued growth of the town, which ultimately is our goal to get to that last, the next step, which is the commercial development. So Chris, do you have anything, you know, you want to recap with or finish up with and maybe speak to a couple of the comments that were made?
Yeah, I mean, I can start to go through the, the list of comments that I have. And again, I, I thank everybody for their comments and their participation tonight. Partnership is absolutely key here and has always been part of it. Starting with Tricia's comments, trustee Tokowski, sorry, for the commercial, absolutely. We, we, that corner at Daniel and the southwest corner, that's got CVS or Walgreens written all over it. And I have called CVS and Walgreens repeatedly, I call them multiple times a year and say, hey, guys, remember this. I've tried to get in front of them as much as we can. If, if people feel better, if we put a for sale sign on that corner, I think we can certainly do so. I mean, that, if that will encourage or make people feel better. There is no, aside from, you know, President Weidmeyer, there's nobody that is a bigger cheerleader for commercial in Pingery Grove than I am. I mean, I am actively working on trying to get people there. Trustee Kubiak, in terms of your question, as far as the sign that needs to go up on the southwest corner, tell me how big a sign you want, we'll put it up there. I mean, the sign that we have right now, I get calls off of that sign. We have plenty of, especially, you know, coming up until March of 2020, I had I had quite a number of calls and quite a number of people that we were working with. Once COVID hit, those all seem to go away. As far as the comment that, well, the parcel across the street is that guy is selling it for so much less. We own all three corners. You're remaining at that south intersection. So the, the price is all the same on that one. The only, I, I, I don't know who's, where the information is coming from as far as what the prices are or what we're doing. More than anything, when a commercial user comes in, our initial response has always been great. Tell me what you want to do. The first thing you need to do is you need to get into the village. You need to go see, you go see the mayor prior, prior, it was go see, go see the village manager. Go, go see the finance manager, talk to the village. They're very, very excited. Figure out what it is you guys want to do and then let's work it out. Yeah, I, I have, I, I will give people CAD drawings of the site. We will do whatever we can. We are never going to be the impediment for growth. Big regret from a commercial standpoint, the only. I, I, of course we are a business and we are, you know, there, there is a dollar amount attached to the land, but that's never been a stumbling issue on this. The only concern that we have and the real threshold issue that we have as far as our commercial properties is we're only going to sell to an end user. We sold one piece of land at Ryan King and 72 as part of the initial part of our development to, and we're told that that development was going to charge forward back in 2005. And we sold it and we're still staring at that empty corner 15 years later, realizing they, they weren't going to move ahead with it. So my only criteria for a buyer of our commercial sites is that they're the ultimate end user. They're going to come forward and we did sell the second part of the Lazar development. The, the, the two story commercial building in front of neighborhood 20 behind the BP. That was land that we sold to the Lazar's and they the building they were going to do, they showed us the plans. We made, they, they went into the village, they started the entitlement process and then we sold it to them when they were ready to get their approvals and ready to go. So we're, we're certainly ready to do whatever it takes. Or as I think Bruce touched on the big timber questions and hopefully those answers were sufficient. I can speak to it more. We can speak to it more if there's more questions on it. From a historical standpoint, you raised the issue of, you had heard the village could have gone to Elgin. That's how, that's how this entire project started in the first place was the residents of Pingree Grove, the village board did not want to become part of Elgin. They didn't want to just be swallowed up in all of what Elgin is. They, they wanted to be their own selves. They wanted to create their own feeling. And that's what Cambridge Lakes and Pingree Grove was, was that there was a developer and a municipality working together to build a sewer and water plant from scratch at the very beginning of the onset on it. It, you know, reflecting on it, listening to it and being here at this meeting. I was at the meeting when Chief Bean was first hired as one of the first members of the Pingree Grove Police Department. It was the idea of we're going to have our own police department. That was something that was very important to the village and together we made that happen. So it, it is true that there was the potential to become part of Elgin, but that was a negative, not a positive. That was something the village definitely wanted to avoid, which was why we came up with the development agreement, why the annexation agreement came into play in the first place and why the village has looked to grow ever since, you know, the early 2000s. Trustee Pearson, you had mentioned that the schools would be impacted. Where that would be part of the impact, the, the development agreement, the impact, the annexation is impact fees would be part of that and something that's negotiated and discussed as it's been throughout the entire community. The charter school was something that was very important. The village wanted a school in Pingree Grove. And District 300 did not want to provide one. District 300 wanted to go somewhere else. So that was a way that the school actually had a campus in Pingree Grove. Again, always as a partnership, finding solutions. There were some questions about the HOA and the resolution of that. That's something that I, I, we, we will need to talk about. Not something that I'm prepared to address or discuss tonight, but we can certainly work through that. And I can, I hear and understand what you're saying. I think that's, I, I've, I've tried to address all of the comments. Has there, has there been anything else that I didn't talk to? I, I think that's all I have for tonight. Mr. Cook, where do you want to go from here?
I, I think I want to thank you for your time and your presentation here this evening. We will also go over the discussion here tonight and take a look at if there's anything that was outstanding that we can follow up with you on. Clearly there's some work to be done. And we'll be in touch.
I had one other thing. Hal, did you want to have anything tonight? Have you here as part of the discussion and haven't haven't addressed it, talked yet?
Thanks, Chris. No, I, I think we, we've heard from the trustees. We appreciate their input. I, I think we've got, we've heard their concerns. I mean, I, I got a sense from listening to all the, the good comments that we received and the concerns, I got the sense that there is a general consensus to move forward to, you know, to not stop the train at this point. There's obviously a lot to be discussed where we have to negotiate an agreement. There needs to be issues resolved. There needs to, it's clear from the comments that the trustees are going to want to make sure that in simple terms, there's something in, in the new deal for existing residents. And, but I don't hear anybody saying, don't, don't move forward. And, and, and I think that's the big issue for tonight, because if we go forward at this point in time, you know, as the village manager indicated, we haven't formally applied for anything. We haven't, we haven't drafted anything. We've not submitted anything to the village attorney or to the village generally. So if we go down that path, you know, both the village and D R Horton is going to be devoting a lot of time and a lot of money to trying to make this happen. You know, the trustees can, one or more of the trustees can correct me if I'm mistaken, but based on what I heard, I don't hear anybody saying, don't move forward. I don't, I, I think everybody wants to know what a final agreement would look like, but I, I haven't heard anybody say, don't move forward. So, you know, if, if, if that's incorrect, you know, I'd, I'd like to have the trustees tell, tell us that there is. I'm sure you know this, that, you know, we're talking about the potential for an 11th amendment to an annexation agreement and statutorily that requires a super majority vote of the village board or, or of the corporate authorities, I should say, the village president and the trustees. So, you know, I don't think you want to waste a lot of time and money and several months. And neither do we, you know, only to come before the corporate authorities in a few months and say, I never, I never wanted to do this deal. I never liked this deal. So, you know, I don't, I don't hear anybody saying that though. I hear a bunch of, a number of issues that need to be addressed, a number of concerns that have been expressed. But I, I, I've, I've heard everybody say, let's keep, let's keep the partnership going and try to come to terms on a new deal.
Okay, then I, I, for me personally, I, I would prefer that you make right on what's been wrong in the past before I'm even honestly willing to move forward. So you need to make right with the Caroline and get that settled. And then when the HOA is done over here, we need to make sure that the same problems are not on this side of town. Otherwise than as far as I'm concerned, then we don't need to move forward.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the comment.
All right. Thank you.
I, I did have a question about what you just mentioned and, and I did also say that I'm willing to move forward once pre prior obligations have been met. I say that. But I had a question and maybe I'm, I missed something. I thought this was going to be a brand new annexation agreement. I did not realize that we're talking about an 11th amendment to the original annexation agreement. This is, this is, I don't know if that's just new to me or if I missed it before. Can you clarify that?
Sure. So, and we've, and, and in fairness, you know, we've talked about that issue with the village attorney and, and the village staff, and I understand that it could go both ways. I, at this point in time, you know, we would just ask, I think the most we can ask right now is for you to keep an open mind on that issue. We, we have prepared, again, if this moves forward, we've prepared, and I know there's a lot of paper there. I've been involved from day one in this development. And, and have, have been, you know, involved in all the drafting and the negotiating of the original agreement back in 2004, which got signed in 2004, the negotiations and drafting started actually before then. So I've been involved in this for a long time. And so nobody knows better than I, how much paper is involved? How many words have been written and how much needs to be read to be under, to, to fully understand what's occurred historically and what's in place today. So it's our belief that, that there's benefit in doing an 11th amendment. There's benefit to both the village and D R Horton by doing an 11th amendment. And rather than starting from scratch, because there's so many issues that have been addressed in those prior 10 amendments in the original agreement. To have to go back through all of them and say, well, we want to keep this concept, but we don't want to keep that concept. Or we, we want to get rid of this concept and we don't want to get rid of that one. What I would ask is this, we have spent an incredible, I, I have spent an incredible amount of time working with the D R Horton team creating some, a summary of the original agreement and also summaries of all the amendments. So that all of you who weren't around at the beginning and, and weren't involved in the process that resulted in the 10 amendments, although some of you were involved in some of the later amendments, I think. I think it'll make it easier for you to understand our position that there's benefit in keeping everything in place and doing an 11th amendment, since you're dealing with the same developer and the same development and extension of the development. You can keep a, your own mind open. If you could keep your mind open and reserve opinion on that, that's all we could ask for at this time. I, I think that once you receive our summary of the agreement, we will, and I could see us spending a meeting just going through that. The original agreement provisions, relevant provisions and the amendments. I think we can explain to you effectively why we think it's best to do an 11th amendment and not to start from scratch. So we're not going to resolve that tonight. Either way, at the end of the day, either way, it requires a, a public hearing in front of you, the corporate authorities. And either way, whether it's a new agreement or an amendment, it still requires a super majority, you know, five out of seven votes. And, and, you know, to, you know, to be perfectly candid, you know, this is an annexation and an annexation agreement. You, you know, I, I've always said in doing this for a living, people in your position have a right to say no for a good reason, a bad reason, or no reason at all. At the, you know, it's, it's not, it's not something, it's something where you have to feel comfortable and we want to make you feel comfortable that at the end of the day, it's, it's a good deal for the existing residents in the village. So, you know, that's our goal. That's our hope. It's, it's, it's like, it was said earlier that, you know, there's been a longstanding partnership here, a partnership has to work for both partners. So our goal is to focus on an 11th amendment. Hopefully at the end of the day, you'll agree that that's the way to go. And hopefully you'll be supportive of an 11th amendment.
Okay. Thanks again, everybody from, from the Horton, D R Horton group, and we appreciate your time and your, your comments. And I'm sure we'll have a, a brief discussion on this this evening. And obviously this is, this is months and months from being over. You know, this isn't something like I think you alluded to earlier, this isn't something we're going to be voting on in the month of January, in the month of February. Probably not even in the month of March would be my guess at this point. So it's, it's, these are, these are long processes. There's going to be several meetings. There's going to be several public hearings that we'll be having on this subject. So the, the public will absolutely, absolutely have an opportunity to speak and, and further their comments. Hopefully we'll have the municipal center opened again at some point where we can have these in, in in person. I think those in-person meetings just run much better and smoother and, but. Chris, you want to have any final words?
Yeah, well, with the municipal center, it'll be nice to have a meeting space large enough again, where we don't have to back the fire trucks out to, you know, have our hearings like we used to, but there, there is a while to go is the mayor certainly outlined. From our standpoint, we would love to be in the ground and moving forward with this, this, this summer. So we've got a while to go before this, but we still have the, it's a near term thing in terms of how soon we're ready to move forward with this for the village. So thank you again for your time and your comments tonight. I am always available if anyone wants to reach out, if anybody has any questions, additional things that they want, wanted to talk about with me. I will always make myself available to you. So thank you again, and I look forward to continuing to work with you guys.
Thanks, Chris. Okay. I think that's our only special presentation this evening. So we're going to move on with the consent agenda, which is the approval of the minutes from the meeting of December 7th of 2020. Approval of a warrant list for December 21st, 2020 in the amount of $415,535.15 from January 4th to 2021 in the amount of $110,351.75 and January 18th of 2021 in the amount of $496,543.84. Also the approval of pay application numbers one and two for test well, number one to municipal well and pump in the amount of $107,133.30 and $101, I'm sorry, $101,793.60 respectively. So we get a motion in a second on that. Any discussion, we'll, we'll have that.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on those three items for the consent agenda?
I did have a quick question either for Karen or Pat. Just please remind me the I E P A loan for the sewer at $15,000. Remind me what, like, how long is that loan for and what specifically are we, did we borrow for? Does anybody remember that?
Sorry for the delay. The loan was for the flume and the discharge that we did many years ago as part of the plant. When we originally built the plant, there was many hurdles to even annex or be able to build a plant in the, the village. And initially we weren't allowed to discharge. So we had to build the plant first and irrigate only. When there was a low number of homes, everything worked out. But we soon realized that long-term, the math wasn't going to work out. There was no other option though. We were not going to get a permit to discharge until we built the plant. So then we went back, got a permit to discharge and built the flume. And we discharged to the wetlands six months out of the year. And then the other six months, we store water in the treat, or in the lagoon in back, treated water that we use for irrigation. The new plant expansion will change the way all that works. They're kind of working all of it together. We're to the point this year where this is the first year we got. We didn't make it six months. We, the lagoon fills up faster because we have residents. It fills up faster than we can irrigate safely. So I don't know how often the payment is. I just know it was for that flume expansion. And it also built the shed over the sludge building as part of the, you know, the discharge.
It also added the UV for disinfection on the, at that too, didn't it? It also added the U V for, for disinfection on the, at that, too, didn't it, Pat?
It added a channel for U V, but we have not, we never installed the U V. It was to be installed later if we so desired.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Shelley, you want to call the role, please?
Yes. Trustee Delkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Hall?
Yes.
Trustee Kubiak?
Yes.
Trustee Hirschbein?
Yes.
Trustee Lemus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item seven is a separate, separate action item. We only have one this evening. It's the approval of a purchase of replacement streetlight assemblies in an amount not to exceed seventy-five hundred. Pat, do you have anything to just recap on this? Unmute, Pat.
All right. We're out of streetlight assemblies. And because of the long lead time, we want to have some in stock in case we need to replace from an accident. The memo recaps everything, though. We did do two replacements this year. One, the offender was caught. The other one, the offender was not caught.
The purchase of three replacement streetlights assemblies in an amount not to exceed seventy-five fifty.
Second. Any further questions or comments? Shelley, call the role, please.
Trustee Delkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Kubiak?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Hirschbein?
Yes.
Trustee Lemus?
Yes.
Trustee Hall?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to staff reports. I did talk to Clint a little bit briefly today. You guys are all aware that the, the Milk House Ice Cream, they were awarded the, are included in the Illinois Maid Program. It was, it was a very small, select group of businesses in Illinois that was featured in the Illinois Tourism, the Illinois Department of Tourism. Well, he, he just made a comment to me today. I thought it was interesting. I thought I would pass it on that they're, they're getting people now from all over the country coming to the Milk House in Little Pingery Grove. So he's had people from New Orleans recently, people from New York State, in several other states, he said, have been people. So they're, they're going to look to expand to do some kind of branding and, and, you know, T-shirts that say, you know, I went to Illinois and all I got was this T-shirt from the Milk House or something to that effect. That was my idea. But, but, you know, so it's, it's just, it's interesting that, you know, you know, we're, we're, we're reaching even, an even bigger map now for Little Pingery Grove than, you know, when this all started twenty years ago. When these, all these, these big men in suits rolled into town and said, guess what, gentlemen? So. Anyway, Jeff, you want to kick off your first ever report as a village manager?
Sure, I would love to, President Weedmeyer. Wanted to just introduce myself to all the people who may still be watching. You know, I'm Jeff Cook. I've just joined the village. Starting my third week this week. And so this is a great way to kick it off at this, uh, meeting this evening. And I wanted to thank you all that I have had the opportunity to meet. Everyone I've met so far has been incredibly gracious and kind in, in my interactions. And I think that really says a lot about the community. And I'm really looking forward to working more closely with each and every one of you in bringing issues like we discussed tonight forward. Wanted to recognize today as being M L K Day, Martin Luther King Junior Day, and recognize Dr. King for his contributions toward a fair society and his nonviolent methods. Also, on the issue of COVID nineteen, you may have heard, the Illinois Department of Public Health had issued a new release today that moved Region Eight, which we are part of, back to Tier Two mitigations from the Tier Three mitigation. So that information and what all that means is actually available through the I D P H website. And on the vaccination issue, I know that Kane County is ramping up to start their Phase One B vaccination program. And that's going to include people who are sixty-five and over, first responders, like fire and law enforcement, as well as a lot of our frontline workers that are out there in the community. So it's a big effort. It's a major effort. But it's, it's, you know, we're heading in that direction, and that's great. One of the things, though, that comes up with that is we need, we need people who are medically trained to be able to put those shots in people's arms. You know, the, the delivery piece is an important piece. And Kane County Health is looking for trained medical volunteers. So I wanted to put that out there. If anybody knows anybody who, who may have some time and want to volunteer, they do have to be trained medical professionals. Kane County is operating, the Kane County Medical Reserve Corps. And they have an application right on their website, and, and we'll put it up on our website tomorrow to get you a link to that if, if you, you or somebody you know might be interested in volunteering in that effort. And then lastly, this evening, I just wanted to recognize Village Clerk and Customer Service Representative Shelley Jurzak. She has indicated that her last day will be on February fifth. And I wanted to congratulate her on her new opportunity, which is, you know, very fitting for her family and aspirations. I wish you well and the best. I wish I could have worked with you longer. But we will be planning to, you know, post a job notice as soon as possible on that as well. So thanks again, Shelley. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff. Sean, anything tonight?
Two quick things. One was Village Manager Cook. We related the police reform statute that had changed, or passed both houses last week. It's waiting the governor's signature if he hasn't already signed it. Working on a summary of that. That's in more detail to find out exactly what hoops we'll have to jump through and cost factors involved. An example of that's going to be is it's going to mandate body cameras for the police officers. There was a significant amount of cost with that. So we're going to need to check into that a little bit further and some other things. Training they're going to mandate. There's lots of things in the seven hundred and fifty-page law. I've only gotten through four hundred pages of it. So it's a quite consuming in reference to trying to get the summary right for everybody. Second thing is, I want everybody to be aware of, one of the things I was working on here during the D R Horton presentation, is that there was a terrible accident tonight at Coombs and Highland involving four teenagers from Pingery Grove. Two of them were airlifted to St. Joe's Hospital. One is in a very serious condition. They appear to be around fourteen years of age, and they are students at the Hampshire High School. I have no further information at this particular time in relation to that, other than they were skateboarding apparently on the roadway and a car struck them. Kane County, who was handling the crash, did issue a press release. So, uh, nothing further. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Director Plaza, you're up.
Um, I just want to thank everybody for their comments and ideas about the D R Horton development. I think I've expressed to anybody who's asked that I think this is a vital part of the growth of the community and our gateway to commercial and retail development. And I, in particular, appreciate the comments about getting better signage up and getting the information out in more ways about Pingery Grove. So I wanted to thank everybody for, for that. In finance, we're, you know, continuing to work on year-end accounting and W twos and ten ninety-nines and get, get ready for the budget process, which will be starting at probably our next board meeting. So you'll be, you'll be hearing from us on that some more. And if anybody has any questions, of course, you know where to get ahold of me. That's all I have tonight.
Okay. Pat, anything to add this evening?
We had a couple of snowstorms this weekend. Other than that, the trucks are all still running and functioning properly. Other than that, if anybody has any questions.
Okay. Nick, glad to see you with us tonight.
Evening, everybody. Just two quick updates. I believe the last time we all gathered, I made comment about the fact that the R J B project was getting closed out with I dot. We're still working through that paperwork. District One, due to the COVID restrictions, are mostly all working from home. So it's a little challenging to get their attention, to get those items closed out. But we're still hoping to get that project closed out here in, in February. And as I mentioned back in December, it will be under, under the budget or under the, the bid item cost for the project. So to the tune of about a hundred thousand dollars. So that, that's good news. Test well continues to be advanced. Last week, they hit about a depth of about eleven hundred feet, and we're aiming for thirteen hundred feet. So we're getting close. So hopefully, the bore hole will be done sometime this week, and test pumping can start there probably the week after next. Just in case anybody's asked any questions, they did hit a sulfur patch, a sulfur deposit at, while they were advancing the, the test bore. So there was, was a period of time, right, you know, a few weeks back, where there was some, some pretty strong odors coming from that area. Because the tailings from the, the drilling effort that came back up and went into selling bond had sulfur. There was one resident that voiced some concerns. I think it's simply because it was lo- located close to the lift station in fear of the fact that maybe sewage from the lift station was being discharged into the creek. But that was actually just the, the tailings, the smell from the sulfur deposit, the bore hole. So no, no damage, no, no contaminated water was released into the creek. But just in case you, you get asked any questions, that's what happened. That's all I have tonight.
Thanks, Nick. Michael, you've been very quiet this evening. Just, just how I like my lawyer, be very quiet. Do you have any report for us this evening?
President Weedmeyer, I didn't have any comments, but I did want to give the opportunity to the board members. Were there any questions arising in connection with tonight's special presentation? Questions about the process, questions about the public hearings that President Weedmeyer alluded to? Are there any questions that are going to help that immediately come to mind after that presentation tonight?
Okay, I have one. So the parcel of land was annexed in, in the original agreement. And if they, they, is the, the term reannex, is that the correct term?
Deannex.
Or deannex, thank you. So they deannexed. That would not void the original agreement?
No. And I think that there was an express provision in the original agreement that allowed for that. And so this may bleed into Trustee Delkowski's question about whether we look at an amendment, eleventh amendment to the annexation agreement, or an entirely new, separate annexation agreement that addresses this parcel alone. Whether it's an amendment or whether it's a new annexation agreement, the process is one and the same. It's fifteen days' notice in the paper, and there's a public hearing. And as D R Horton's attorney pointed out, whether it's an amendment or an annexation agreement, it's an agreement that addresses annexation and development of the property.
All right. Thanks, Michael.
I thought that when, when the Tenth Amendment came up, and, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought it was listed as the final amendment to this annexation agreement. And then that this, what we're speaking about, this proposed development is, is a whole new annexation agreement. And I'm concerned with the, I'm concerned with using the same parameters from the first annexation agreement. Because I, as I said earlier, I, I don't think it was skewed in the favor of the village. I, I think that it was unfavorable to the village. And my preference, without knowing anything about the annexation agreement process, my preference off the top of my head would be let's start fresh. And I know Hal, I'm not even sure, I'm, I'm not sure who he is, what position he holds with D R Horton, but he was concerned about the paperwork. Not so concerned about the paperwork, truthfully. I'm concerned about getting the details in our favor, or at least fair.
Sure. So Hal's relationship with D R Horton is, he is their outside counsel. He is from a land use background. I probably worked with Hal twenty years ago in connection with the development and an annexation in the village of Lakewood. And Hal's been with a couple of different law firms in his capacity as a land use attorney. D R Horton has expressed a preference to utilize an amendment. Their rationale, not trying to speak for them, is that, that would preclude the parties from having to repeat provisions in earlier agreements, such as perhaps security or the type of infrastructure and the parameters associated with it, so that it's not repetitive. It's more precise. Perhaps it's shorter. The advantage to an annexation agreement, another perspective may be, you wouldn't have to look to the previous ten amendments to pick up the document and learn what we're doing on this specific parcel, this burnage property. There's pros and cons. And I think that while it's D R Horton's preference to use an amendment, ultimately, keep in mind, they need a super majority vote of the village board. So that if this is something the village board feels strongly about, for whatever reason. And Trustee Delkowski, you mentioned, you feel like the original annexation agreement is skewed toward the developer. You mentioned some language in the Tenth Amendment about it being final. That's something we can look at, and we can decide what we think is in the best interest of the village.
I think your point that if you're looking for a particular item, and you have to wade through all those amendments, that would make it easy to miss something that's of value. That, but if you make it all straight through, then you've got them all right there. You don't have to wade through any number of amendments. And I understand it's kind of like reinventing the wheel, but you could take a lot of that wheel and, and put it into this new agreement, can you not?
And Trustee Pearson, your point was emphasized to me when I went through the ten amendments with several cups of coffee. Yes. I understand your point. I agree.
Well, if they said that they were going to go through the process, or they are going through the process, summarizing the original annexation agreement, summarizing all ten of the amendments, it seems to me that the time that it would take to do that summary of those thousands of pages, that it might be just time for, time advantageous just to create a new one. Plus, I don't like the idea of have, of having them provide us with a summary of anything. Because, like I said, that there have been things in the original annexation agreement. And I don't want those things that are to the village's detriment to get lost in a larger summary. I, I, I'm, you know, I'm, this is new to me because I thought it was going to be a new annexation agreement. But again, I think that I'm leading towards the preference of let's start fresh. We've got fresh eyes. We've got more qualified people to, to look at this agreement. And we don't have to worry, like Trustee Pearson said, we don't have to worry about backtracking through each amendment, saying, wait a minute, did we say this here? No, did we say it here? 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 And, you know, start fresh. Ten is enough.
Understood.
I agree totally to, it has to be a new, it has to be a new annexation agreement.
Okay. Well, we're not going to resolve that tonight either, but we'll, these are all things that we have to discuss moving forward. Okay. Well, we're not going to resolve that tonight either, but we'll, these are all things that we have to discuss moving forward. Mick, you all done? Oh, Michael's done too. I'm sorry. My bad.
I'm done.
There's no planning tonight? Shelley, you're up. And again, to, uh, to echo Jeff's sentiments from earlier, we, we, we were obviously caught off guard, I guess is the right word to say with your, uh, resignation. But we do wish you well. We glad you spent some time here and, and we wish you well. So.
Yeah. Um, I'm working on, on a transition plan and making sure that I've documented my procedures as they've changed during my time here, especially in light of our, um, uh, implementing BSNA. Um, so I'm, I'm definitely going to do the best I can to get all of that, um, documented. Uh, moving on to other things, um, we do have, um, since today's a holiday, I just wanted to remind everyone that the, this particular holiday does not affect garbage pickup day for Flood Brothers. That will still be on Friday this week, so there is no delay, um, delayed pickup. And then the last thing would be, um, it's about that time of year again for our economic interest statement, um, reporting period. I will be sending out a notification email to remind all of our filers, um, to watch for the county's email. I have also already provided the county with, um, Manager Cook's contact information. Um, as that reporting period will be in the latter, starting in the latter part of May, so, or I'm sorry, March. Um, so I will be gone already then, so they will have his contact information and he'll be able to, um, edit, uh, the, the contact information for who, um, whomever replaces me. So, um, that way everyone can stay on top of it and make sure that, um, if there's any, uh, trustees or any other filers that, um, for some reason have trouble filing, um, that, uh, they can work with, uh, Manager Cook to get that taken care of. So I just wanted to thank the board again. I, I will be at the next board meeting, but I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank you for everything that you have allowed me to do here. I, I, I fully expected my time here to be longer, but I, I did have an excellent opportunity that, um, was really great for my family and I, I, I'm not able to pass it up. But, um, you know, I hope that everyone understands that.
Okay. Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you.
Is there any other old or new business for this evening? Does anybody want to have any final thoughts or comments on the presentation that we had tonight? Or have you had enough of that? We want to just kind of sleep on it? We want to, you know, I, I strongly encourage you to not just, you know, out of sight, out of mind, treat this, because, you know, again, I know they have an aggressive schedule and we, and, and we've always tried to work with their aggressive schedules and we will try to work with them on this one. But, you know, anything that, any comments that come up and then, you know, alls I can say is be like Trish, write them down.
Well, I just hope that they heard what, what I was saying about past obligations. That will be a timely process for them. So if they're serious about getting, you know, getting the ground, you know, whatever the phrase is, start digging soon. They have a lot of work to do before all of that can happen. So I hope that they, um, that they took, took, took my word seriously because I, I really did mean that.
Okay. Anything else from anybody? I mean, it's Mick?
Similar to what Mike said, you know, just for everybody's reassurance that, you know, there's some infrastructure things or at least mentioned tonight that talked about. And it's really early in the process to be talking about those as Village Manager Cook mentioned, you know, right now is just a level of planning and we're going to go into those next steps, but those, many of those infrastructure items that were brought up, there's multiple solutions that can be vetted and find one that works, um, you know, for both parties. So, you know, if you have any concerns about infrastructure, you know, what, similar to what Attorney Smorn said, you know, just drop us an email or a call and let us know and we can work through them. But I don't see anything in this plan from an infrastructure perspective that we can't find a solution for. So, um, but there, uh, obviously are things we're going to have to work through in, in future steps.
Thank you, Mick. Okay. If there's nothing else this evening, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Call the roll, Shelley, please.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Delkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Lemus?
Yes.
Trustee Hall?
Yes.
Trustee Kubia?
Yes.
Trustee Hirschbein?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. I appreciate your time this evening and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.